I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Georgia Hall, President Bob Nelson.
Here.
Mark Meyer.
Here.
Harleen Kane. Sam Howers.
Here.
Ryan Richards.
Here.
Caroline Swirzenbach.
Here.
Skylar Wetzel.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a form. I'd like to move on and adopt the agenda. Again, reminder to all the council, if there is an item that comes up for vote, that you have a conflict of interest, please notify the rest of us. And I would ask for a motion at this time to approve the agenda.
Did you want to add an executive session?
Okay, yes, it's good. Thank you for the reminder. And we do want to add an executive session for legal at the end discussion.
Motion to approve the agenda adding executive session for legal.
Second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve the agenda with the addition of executive session. Any questions, comments, or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have before you the minutes of the December 4th council meeting. I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes at this time.
Make a motion to approve minutes from the December 4th council meeting?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those minutes. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to claims, we have bills in between. I'd accept a motion to approve bills in between.
Motion to approve bills in between.
Will you state the dollar amount in your motion?
Okay, bills in between. 103,786 and six cents.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. If there are any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have current claims, an amendment to current claims. To amend the current claims to $77,248.77. I believe that our finance office did find a way to save us some money. Mr. Wade, if you'd care to identify that item for the council.
Could you read that again?
It's $77,248.77.
Thank you.
Page three, the fourth claim down northwest by bidding. They agreed to provide us with a discount for timing limits. So we have $98.44 as a credit on that. And they'll continue to do that with our employees as long as we can time it forward.
Okay, under that, I would accept a motion then to approve the current claims as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve current claims as amended for $77,248.77.
I'll say it then.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those current claims. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have communications from the public tonight. We have two on the agenda. First of all, we have Rich Zocker from the DOT. And we've had some concerns with safety issues on the bypass through town. And Rich has a plan to address some of those concerns.
Thanks, George.
How's that? Very good. Okay. I'll open with a little history lesson. Last time we resurfaced 18B, the truck route, was in 2010. What we're going to talk about tonight, we actually thought about at that time. But the traffic counts really didn't warrant the left turn lane at Highway 71. Now, there's some pros and cons with the installation of a left turn lane. And John will get into that in a minute. So we didn't do it. We didn't do it then. Well, if you've been around Hot Springs since 2010, a lot has gone on on Highway 71 since then. So the traffic counts now warrant a left turn lane. What we're here tonight about is, like Mr. Mayor said, is to improve the safety of this intersection. In 2012, there was a rash of accidents there, if you remember that. We came in and did a safety audit, made some signing and pavement marking improvements, put some rumble strips down to get people's attention before they got to the intersection. And since then, we've averaged about a crash a year, which for an intersection like this is about what we would expect. About what we would expect, but still room for improvement. So what we want to do tonight is present a center turn lane continuously, which has some pros and cons. Like I said, now that the left turns on the 71 warrant a left turn lane, I'll let John kind of explain, here's how this will improve for some of the traffic, but we may be going backwards for the other. So we came tonight just to present this in front of the council. Number one, to get your opinion. And then also, we'd like to know if you think this is an item that should maybe, we should hold a public meeting. Because we could come back and hold a public meeting and invite comments from all of the public. So with that, John can kind of explain the pros and cons of what we put in front of you.
Thanks.
As Rich mentioned, the westbound US 18B traffic, turning left on the southbound Highway 71, does now meet the volume warrants for a left turn lane. And as Rich mentioned, to kind of accomplish that, basically what we would be doing is taking the eastbound passing lane and creating a left turn lane. So then there would only be one eastbound lane, which would be what is currently the right lane in that direction. What this would do, if the left turns in both directions were in that lane, that improves their sight distance, so they can see the traffic that's going to be coming straight through that intersection rather than how it is now. If they're in basically the passing lane, if there's someone else in the passing lane and also making a left turn, they can't see around that vehicle to see what's going to be coming through that intersection, creating what could potentially be a hazardous situation. What this would also do with making it just the one eastbound lane, it eliminates the passing opportunities for vehicles traveling eastbound. We have what we call a level service. This kind of determines, lets you know how well traffic is flowing. And it's on a scale like grading. So right now, it's a level service A. Everyone can go as fast as they want there, basically, most of the time. Doing, making this change, we would go now to a level service C or D, which is stable flow nearing, approaching unstable flow. And with the truck speed limit being lower than the other speed limit there, there may be some people who are passing through town expecting to be able to go to 45 miles an hour to there, and they get stuck on the truck at 35 miles an hour. This could eventually, you know, people not willing to wait, decide to chance it and use the turn lane as a passing lane. So there are potential problems that could develop in situations as well.
Okay, thank you. And I hope you're not suggesting that they use the turn lane as a passing lane. Okay, just wanted to make that clear. Well, we appreciate you coming forward to present us with this option. I think, first of all, I think, and maybe get some comments from the council, but it might be a good thing to have a public meeting on this and get the input from the public since it does impact the traffic flow through town. I also want to make a comment. I do appreciate you relooking at this. I know at the recent step meeting, I had the opportunity to express concerns about the safety along the bypass, since we had just recently had an accident prior to that meeting. I don't know if this is a direct result of that, but it does show that you are listening and paying attention. When you talk about unstable flow, what is your definition of that for our community?
Unstable flow could just basically mean, instead of stable flow, I would call, you know, maybe not necessarily going as fast as you want to, but you're always moving, always moving in the direction you want to go. Unstable flow, you could eventually kind of have some situation where you come to a halt in your stop or stop conditions before you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Would this intersection ever warrant a light, like a blinking yellow light or something to further warn people?
If the volumes.
If they're increased. But not at this time?
I haven't checked the warrants for that, but I don't believe it would be that.
John?
Okay, go ahead. If there's any counsel, please go ahead and step in.
Yeah, I talked to Rich a couple of years ago about this too. When you say the flow, unstable flow, with our truck bypass being a gradient for trucks to run off, and you only have one lane, isn't that a problem? With only one lane? If they would go out, their brakes would go out or?
The speed differential is part of the negatives of this. Well, you improved the left turn safety at the intersection, just what John was saying, some instability there. It's probably been a long time with the improvement, you know, with the brakes on trucks and how that operates. But certainly the potential's there. But even just the difference in the speed limit and the right turners, and you're going to have, you know, more differential speeds, which can create a hazard. You know, we established our speed limits based on what we call the 85% sign. If everybody's driving the same speed, does it really matter how fast they're going? You know, everyone's going the same speed. What we've introduced by reducing this to one lane is a real differential in speed. Not only the through traffic, but there's the right turners. And so there's potential rear end accidents where before it was probably almost no potential for rear end accidents.
Would there be a reduction in speed limit along with this?
We'd have to do that study following the change, to be honest. Yeah, there has been some discussion about just doing away with the truck speed limit, the differential in the speed limits. But in reality, people are going to drive what they're going to drive. You know, it's that most people drive to their surroundings, not to the posted speed limit. So I think that would still, you still have that potential for differential speeds. Now, this is such a short segment, you know, we're not even talking about it. It's not like we have 15 miles of this. But it's still, especially when you sign it as a B, a bypass, the expectation is, because I'm going through.
Right. So isn't there a potential of widening it to make another lane?
Yeah, and that's in the future possibly, but the traffic volumes now, you know, don't. And I don't want to spell this as such a doomsday thing. If you're familiar with Custer, they did the same thing a number of years ago on Fifth Street leaving town. They used to have two lanes up and down. Now they have two lanes up, one lane down, center turn. And they don't know of any issues. You know, we haven't had a big increase in crashes with the traffic going down the hill. You know, so.
The only difference is the school zone is there. So people were slower. I know, but they were slower to begin with. This is going from fast to slow.
Yeah, it is a much higher speed.
Yeah, and people coming from Agmont, from over the hill, I mean, they are going, you know, pretty quick. And they don't plan on slowing. That's the idea.
Right.
So I agree with George that we probably need to have our whole community involved in this because people are not going to be aware of what the changes are until they'll be upset, I think.
Yeah. So we can certainly do that. That's, you know, that's what I thought when I first just, you know, called to see if we could get on the agenda. It was more to decide if the council thought this was a public meeting worthy of adopting or.
Are there any other questions or comments that bother?
Sorry. I asked him a question. Is it the recommendation of the DOT that we do this or?
Just like we've stated, there's pros and cons. There's pros and cons. Just because it meets the warrants of left turn doesn't mean we always put a left turn in. You know, every intersection is a little different.
Are you ready?
This is generally doesn't say probably.
Good answer. Sorry.
The picture of the intersection itself. There's a, on the south end of the intersection, is left turn and right turn lane?
No. We don't have a right, we don't have a right turn lane marked.
I think he's looking at this double.
The right lane, just the short.
The double there, down below.
Oh.
And that just means that when you're in a center lane, you can make a right hand turn or a left hand turn.
Yeah, right at the intersection, it would be dedicated lefts only. But then once you get away from the intersection, they're approaching, it's kind of scattered along there. Then it's kind of a center turn lane. Someone going either direction could use that as a left turn.
And how far south does this lane extend? To where you get into the 35 mile an hour down there?
Yeah, it currently strikes with the center turn lane. So that would just continue on. With this time.
Thank you.
Rich, would there be any opportunity to make a right hand learning, turning onto 71 off of the bypass? I think that would really enhance the safety.
Yeah, we've got a lot of big points on that. Right turn lanes can have, can have a negative effect as well. There's pros and cons with that, to be honest. I, on my way home east of Custer, there's a right hand turn lane. Leaving the school, and it makes me nervous all the time. Is that person really going to turn right, or do they think this is a poor lane? You know, so there's some pros and cons with right hand turn lanes as well. But that would be something we could look at the counts.
Okay, I think that would be something that I'd certainly like to have you do. Since you mentioned the possibility of coming downhill, there is a lot of traffic that goes to our Fall River Health Services up 71. And if that is, people are slowing to turn there, it might, that turn lane might provide some added safety.
That was what I was asking you.
About right hand turn lane. Yeah. So, you know, if you've noticed that Maverick Junction where there's a right hand turn lane, this past summer, we put an enhancement there. It's called a, it's called a high friction surface. And that's to help those right turners who are going faster than they should to slide into those people that parked at the intersection. We would have an identical situation here. Identical situation here, where it's just, there's pros and cons to those as well.
Okay, absolutely. Any other questions? Any questions from the audience?
I just have a statement to make, and Carol had it spot on with that signal lamp. I think when they first put that in, and while we did have a bunch of those accidents right away.
Could you come to the microphone, please, so that we could hear you? Thank you. Just want to make sure everyone is able to hear what your points are.
I just want to point out, Carol had it spot on with that signal lamp. That when they first put that in, I believe we had a lot of problems right away. And I do think that if we had a flashing yellow coming down the hill for the truckers and flashing red for the cross traffic in the Galveston, it would really help. Because with that hospital facility now, we have so much more traffic. And I don't know if everybody's aware of it, but the state just improved a whole bunch out of the lake on the Shep's Canyon side. And we're getting a lot of traffic, oh, weekend traffic. And there's a lot of development going on out in that area, Pine Shadows and that old area out there. It's really becoming a lot heavier traffic. When those buses run in and out of town, there's just a string of cars behind that school bus. And I do think that if there's some way of working in, just that possibly in the future, I might. But I really do think that a flashing light right there now would really help out a lot. I was hoping to see what they did to rumble scripts.
You were just talking about warning lights, not that it's sick.
Yeah, just warning light.
Flashing yellow coming down the hill, flashing red or something going across the other way. So that is positive stop and clear, you know, now yield. There's a lot of easy to run stops, I think, too, you know. But I think that would help a lot just to get some traffic control. And the speed limit is actually 45 miles an hour right by the hospital. I don't know if everybody knows that. But people come to town at 45 mile an hour, and you've got a doctor's office on one side and a hospital on the other. But 71 is 45 mile an hour right by the hospital. And people pull out of the hospital like, okay, they can turn town and everybody's driving 25, but it's not working that way. But just a few things to think about. If we do some work on that, it'd be nice to maybe get that light up like Carol had.
Will you state your name for the record?
Oh, John Nash, 12571 Black Hills, Hot Springs.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thanks, John.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you very much for bringing that.
We'll look at something after the first of the year, of course.
Sure.
Something just so we have a plan in place before spring and whether we're allowed us to do anything.
Okay, great. And we appreciate you coming and bringing this to people so that we can do some thinking. We'll get back with you if there are any other suggestions or comments that we have.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you for that time.
Thank you. Next, communications from the public. We've been given a package from Gentral. I ask Molly to come forward. And we've got also Ryan with you tonight. Okay, great.
There are two of us tonight.
Good.
Molly?
Yeah.
Before you can start, if I could ask, we've given a packet for you folks, October 30. Would it be the same as this one? Here's what I made all my notes.
No, this is going to be an updated packet. There were some changes in system sizes and designs and financials as well, with some new information that we've gotten from the state.
Thank you.
So the last time, we just went through kind of a really high level overview of, you know, solar per cities, how it can benefit the city, and what facilities we were going to look at. This packet is going to go into a lot of very granular detail about what each system would look like, what the size of the system's going to look like, how many panels it's going to be, what types of inverters. And then there's also a full financial breakdown. So I didn't want to dive too much into the details on every single system that we're looking at, because I really want you to be able to take these home and read them on your own time and come up with any types of questions you have. And then take our time to answer those as thoroughly as possible, because it is going to be a little bit of an information overload. So the facilities that we were looking at for the solar portfolio were Evan Plunge, the Hot Brook Pumping Station, the Water Treatment Plant, the Maintenance Shed, the Library, the Airport, the Mueller Center, the Visitor Center, and the Police Department. So the overall size of all of those facilities combined would be just a little bit over a half a megawatt, or 524.095 KW. We also did look at a 200 KW generator, which is the size you would need for 72 hours of autonomy at the Hot Brook Pumping Station, which will allow you to keep pumping in case of a blackout. So our total solar portfolio cost is listed on there, and that would be $969,649. And the total cost of the Hot Brook Backup Generator would be $123,385, for a total project cost of just a little bit over a million dollars.
Molly, could I just, I'm sorry for interrupting, but the Hot Brook Generator is made aware today that there may be the possibility that we could get a grant to provide that emergency power through some kind of an agency, because it is a backup emergency situation. Can you, is there a way to figure that in and change? Does that significantly change your?
Yeah, I took the generator out of the solar breakdown, just because, you know, a generator is not there for energy production. That's really just an emergency backup. So I kind of kept those two parts of the project separate anyway, so we could look at them as two different pieces to that puzzle. And I know there are quite a few state funds and grants that are available, especially for water treatment facilities. So if we could get a grant to cover a bunch of that, then that would be great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So the next thing that I went into was, this is what our financial breakdown is, and it's going to be, start with this page, that says the Hot Springs Municipal Solar. There is a state statute that says that any municipality can only have a lease of 10 years or less, which kind of threw a little bit of a wrench into the 20-year lease plan and affects the payback and the financials just a little bit. The overall savings for the project is going to remain the same in terms of energy savings, but it just shifts the payback periods a little bit. So that's why this proposal is going to be slightly different than the one from October. I don't know, I've been trying to dig into it to see if there is a way to get approval around that statute, but I haven't quite found that yet. But I will keep digging. So on page five is the project summary. And I gave you an example of what a 10-year lease would be versus what a cash purchase would be for the project. Obviously, you're going to be paying a little bit more with the lease, because you've got interest on that. The interest rates right now for municipal leases are about 3.5%. So it's not horrible, but cost of capital is still pretty low right now, which is good. Your 30-year electric bill savings, and typically a solar system is going to last about 40 years, so that only cash purchases the first 30 years is going to be over $4 million. So it's going to be about 4.4 million, or almost $4.5 million in electric savings over that 30-year period, which is, you know, not a small chunk. Next, it goes into the internal rate of return for each of those projects. So the internal rate of return is usually driven by how fast or how long you are extending those financial payments. And the longer you finance for, the higher your internal rate is going to be. The quicker you pay it off, the lower your internal rate of return is going to be. The next number that we're looking at is what's called the levelized cost of energy. And that's how much per kilowatt hour that solar system's electricity is costing you. And again, that's affected directly by how quickly you're paying off the system. And so with the cash purchase, that levelized cost of energy is always going to be lower than with a financed option. So the internal rate of return and the levelized costs of energy kind of go hand and like counteract each other a little bit. So depending on what you're looking at as a city, whether or not it's the entire payback on that project, or whether or not you're just trying to fix in the lowest possible energy rate, which would be that 4.2 cents over 30 years, 40 years, those numbers are going to slightly change. And then the next, you'll find just a general net present value calculation, and then the payback periods. And that's for the entire project as a whole. Now, each of these systems is going to be broken down throughout this entire document, so you can, you can see exactly which system is which, how much of the electricity used for that facility. for that facility we're going to cover. So on the next page, on page six, just as an example, this is the airport. Now, on the airport, we were looking to, there's several different meters out there. We were looking to combine those meters and put one system for all of the airport facilities. So you can see that here you've got a twenty-seven-point-seven-two KW system, and it's going to cover about eighty-five percent of the airport's usage on that. And then on page eight, next, what you will see is for each facility, what current rate structure they're on from Black Hills Energy. So the bigger facilities, like the wastewater treatment plant and I believe the Mueller here, are on a lower cost per kilowatt hour than on some of the smaller facilities, which are just on the general rate service. And so you can really dive into which facilities are paying the most for energy to see which facilities would be best to do first because the higher, the more you're paying for electricity, those are facilities you want to offset as quickly as possible. And so it'll give you a breakdown of what you're currently paying on your electric bill and then what you will be paying afterwards. And so that particular thing will go through for every single facility and will give you all of that information. And then at the end of your packets, you're going to have a more technical sheet for each of those facilities that's going to give you what the layout looks like, where you're going to tie into that facility, how big that system is going to be, and exactly what it would visually look like for each of those. And again, it's a lot of information, so I don't expect you to be able to soak it up all tonight.
You talked about doing just a few of them last time. Not all of them?
Yeah, I mean, we really could do...
The most efficient one.
Yeah, anything at this point. You know, if we're only going to do one five KW system at a time, then the pricing's going to look a little different because it takes more to mobilize everything to get down, down here. It's good because we're local, so we're pretty close by, so those travel costs and things aren't that, aren't that big of a part of the project. Most of the bigger systems, like the treatment plant, the Mueller Center, that pricing won't change even if you decided to take one of those facilities out. It's just if we decide to do, you know, like the police station or something, that's a lot smaller.
Cost of electricity goes up too, probably, so that's probably not a factor in this.
Actually, it is a factor in that. We'll put a, we put an escalator to that, so it kind of takes the average over that thirty-year period on how much electricity rates should go up. I mean, that's always somewhat of a guessing game.
Gone up a lot in the last few years or so.
Could be two percent, it could be twenty-five percent, so.
Did anyone talk to weathercraft about what did this affect the roof and the plunge?
No, we have not talked to anyone about the roof yet. Is that a newer, that one's the newer roof, right? And it's just a weight membrane? Yeah. So this particular system for Evans Plunge does not penetrate the roof at all. It just sits right on top of there.
I know, but I'd still like to hear from weathercraft how that affects. It's huge, you know, sitting on the roof.
I've never seen anything about annual maintenance costs or a maintenance program or is that something that has to be implemented also?
Yep, so I actually have a full O and M program and costing in this calculator. Yep. So there will be an annual beyond that, and that's about two cents per watt for each of those systems, and that includes monthly reporting, you know, bi-annual maintenance. Us, there's monitoring systems that we put on all of those, so if something happens to go out, we know as soon as it does. We get an, you know, email at six in the morning saying, your inverter's down. So that would all be in place for this project.
How long has your company been in business?
We have been in business since two thousand and three, so we've been around for quite a while. We started from the livestock water pumping industry and remote telecommunications devices, and then expanded into energy efficiency and full renewables from there.
Are there any other questions from council? Go ahead.
Page forty-two. They look in this packet that I made my notes on, it appears to be representing the same information, just a twenty-year lease versus a ten-year lease.
Yes.
I want to make sure I'm understanding. The lease payment, the city's going to come up with a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars a year to lease the equipment. And then the O and M equipment replacement, is that another ten thousand dollars the city has to come up with?
Yes. So that would be on top of the lease.
So we're looking at a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars to have the equipment in place. And in the twenty-year lease, showing an electric bill savings of sixty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. This one, the ten-year sold for lease, is showing electric savings of seventy-four thousand dollars. The systems have changed?
We did change this, a couple of the sizes of the systems. It was, I want to say the wastewater treatment plant got a little bit bigger to cover more of their usage. We had a roof mount before that was only about fifty KW, and I think that one's up to over seventy now. And that was also because there was an addition of this large machine. So that system size changed, and I want to say that the Hot Brook Pumping Station may have changed slightly, but I may have taken that back down. So I think it's just the water, the water treatment plant.
Looking at the location of the equipment, a number of the solar panels are not mounted on buildings themselves, so is it your recommendation, do those solar panels need to have fencing around them for security?
Yeah, NEC code says that there is going to need to be fencing. All of that is included in the pricing, and there is also dirt work, tree removal, and reseeding that would be needed at the wastewater treatment plant, and all of that pricing is included in the proposal as well. So any type of, you know, ground prep work and fencing is already in there.
Okay, in addition to the panels, what kind of equipment is necessary?
So you have your panels, then you have your inverter, which converts it from DC to AC and to the voltage of that building. There's racking systems that usually have to be UL listed, so they're all compliant into code as well. With the ground mount systems, we actually do geotech as well, so we'll have the geotechnical engineer come out and do soil boring to make sure that, you know, we're going the correct pile depth, that there's nothing underneath those systems that we shouldn't be putting piles into. And there'll be full electrical engineering done there. And there's a lot of wire and conduit and a lot of little pieces that hold everything together. But the three main components are your modules, your inverters, and your racking.
Any of that support equipment, I may want to term for.
Yes.
Does that need, is that going to be mounted in the buildings? Is that going to be mounted with the solar panels? Is there going to be any kind of modifications necessary to the buildings themselves? Now, how is the solar equipment?
No, and most of the time, what we'll do is we'll figure out where the current electrical room is, and if we need to add a separate electrical panel to that building, we'll just put it right next door. And the inverters can either be mounted, it depends on which project, they can either be mounted in that electrical room or on the outside of the building, depending on where we see fit.
And that's all in place cost?
That's all included. Yes.
Thank you.
So Molly, there's, this system ties directly into the panels, isn't that batteries that are used with this?
No, there's no batteries on these systems. Those can get pretty, pretty expensive, so this is just a traditional grid tie, which also means that if the grid goes down, these systems will cut out too. They're not going to keep you up and running during an outage unless we would add batteries. We were just trying to keep costs as low as possible and offset the usage of those facilities.
And what's, so they would go down as well, so the inverter relies on?
On seeing the grid power.
Okay.
Yep. It's also, it's very safe for the fire departments in that way. There's what's called a rapid shutdown or a rapid disconnect. So if the grid goes down, the solar energy system goes down, or, you know, the line may need to go out and do something on the lines. It just is an extra level of protection.
In most leases, there's an out of clause, just not working, want to give the car back on the roof. Is there anything like that here? Once we enter the lease, are we going to be making yearly payments of a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars for ten years?
I would have to, I don't know if there's anything written into this particular lease, so I would have to pull up that information. I just, I don't go back off the top of my head. At the end of that ten years, it's a dollar buyout, so you can buy the equipment for the dollar, and it's yours. But I don't remember any health clauses being in there, but I can think of it.
Well, you know, if this council were to vote to move forward, councils are finicky. You may have a council, you know, three or four years out, they're like, we don't like this, we want out.
Yes, I'd have to, I'd have to ask the finance company what they do in that type of case.
Thank you.
How does the O and M function after we do the buyout? Because typically, you know, when you're leasing equipment, that ought, that should, you know, automatically kind of come with it. Do we go into a separate contract then with you for maintenance at that point?
Yeah, we would just have a totally separate O and M contract then with the lease agreement. The lease agreement would be just for the capital part of that equipment. And that typically our O and M contracts, you know, you can do an annual re-up, they could be for one year and just renew. They don't have to be for totally long-term in ten years if you've figured out you have someone on your staff that can do it themselves and can do it themselves.
I know that when we were looking at the twenty-year, it was kind of nice to think that we would have a partner in maintaining this, somebody who knew what they're doing, but the state's now ten-year limit, it kind of leaves us...
But we're not going anywhere, so we'll be around.
But our forty-year, our forty-year equipment that we're assuming will last at least thirty years, we have you guaranteed for ten.
But our leasing companies guarantee and your guarantee are two separate anyway. Yeah, they're two separate contracts, so, you know, we could always re-up. Gentrow as a company is not planning on selling out or going anywhere for, just on the side of the road, so we're about to sign a couple very long-term little contracts as well.
Molly, is there any kind of clause in the contract if the solar panels do not perform as your calculations indicate, you know, less efficient? Is there a way that, you know, that we can get reimbursed or how is the contract for that?
Yeah, I think what we would have to do in that case is the lease agreement with the finance company is going to be different from any agreement that we would have as, like, the O and M provider or as the builder. So we could probably put some language in there. We've got to be a little bit careful with having it be totally based on, or sounding like it's based on the purchase of electricity, just because that steps off Black Hills Energy's toes a little bit. So we would have to make sure it's pretty, a pretty firm equipment lease, but, you know, we like to stand by our systems as well.
At the end of this thirty-year projected life of this, do they have to start all over with this whole process again, all new equipment?
No, well, the beauty about the solar energy systems is that even if technology changes and there are better panels, you're still going to have the base in there. So if, you know, a panel starts going out after forty years, then you can just replace those panels. The inverters, there's usually, you need to replace them about every sixteen years, and as technology gets better and better, you're just going to be able to kind of add on and replace with your better technologies, you'd have to do that typical maintenance anyway. And the panels also, when they, they don't like just kind of stop working after forty years, they do a very, very slow, they degrade very slowly over time. So they could be sitting there still producing, and maybe it's not going to be at a hundred percent, but they're still making energy after a very, very long time. There are systems that were, you know, put in about fifty years ago that are still producing some of the very early generation.
Any other questions?
One quick.
Sure.
So you talk about the roof mount, it's not screwed into the roof, it's a ballast system. Is there some, something in here that indicates what, like to say for the plunge, for example, that what the total weight would be of those?
Yeah, we have it engineered, so we'll know exactly like what the pounds per square foot on your roof are going to be, and we do it to, I think it's a hundred-and-twenty mile-per-hour wind loads, and down here is probably greater than twenty PSF, it's probably about thirty PSF. So engineering will take a look at that to make sure that we're not putting too much, too much weight in one spot. And those systems are designed in a way so that it's spreading out the weight of that system as much as possible. And there's also a different level of profile, so, you know, if it's a building that maybe has some parapet walls that can block some of the wind, we could do a little bit of greater angle, but if it's somewhere where we know there's going to be a bunch of us coming here, we can do a lower profile.
Okay, council, if there's, do you have any further questions after you've had an opportunity to study this? Obviously, this will be on the Public Works Committee's agenda, and Molly, I assume you and Ryan will be available to answer any questions that we have.
Absolutely.
So again, we appreciate your coming down. We think this is an excellent opportunity, but we want to make sure that we do our due diligence and make the best decision for all, for the community here. So thank you.
Could I ask that maybe when they do come to the Public Works meeting, that we have a poster for a quorum in case a lot of people in the council wants to attend that?
Excellent idea, Carolyn, in pursuit to take note of that. Can you make sure you've got that down, Ms. Dean? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next item in the agenda is committee reports, administrative and finance, Carolyn.
We'll meet on January the second at one PM at City Hall.
Thank you. Airport Advisory Committee, Georgia.
The next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-ninth, which is Friday, and I don't believe we're going to have one. We'll see.
Okay. Custer Fall River Waste Management District, Ron.
Next meeting will be eleven, January, seven PM, U.S. Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carolyn.
We will need and we are hope to have a quorum because we need to do some work on January the third, five PM at the library.
Okay, thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Skylar.
Our next meeting is December twenty-ninth at ten o'clock to discuss the winter closure.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development, Marty.
Next meeting will be Monday, January eighth at three PM, City Hall.
Implanting and zoning commission and Kim, I believe that the next meeting has been...
Yes, the meeting is on the twentieth, and it's been canceled for lack of business. We have our next meeting then scheduled for January sixteenth at seven o'clock at City Hall.
Okay, January sixteenth at seven. Public Safety, Bob.
Next Public Safety meeting will be this Wednesday at City Hall, two o'clock.
And Public Works?
Public Works Committee, on December twelfth. Mayor Gotti, Kim, Tracy, myself are there. Some updates on whole business. We have been talking from time to time about the sewer backup and his private residence that happened here in the midsummer. City Crew's going to be installing a check valve on Galveston Sewer Line to protect that private residence until a permanent solution can be implemented. Update on the fencing around the two-nine gallon tank. The fencing, the installation of that fencing should be beginning this week, and still working on easements. The request for proposals to hire engineering firms for the Canada River sidewalk. Tracy has received three quotes, and he'll be looking at those quotes to review the work requested and the cost. The Freedom Trail expansion, most of that work is complete for this year. The installation of the bridge is expected to begin in the spring, and we have a couple of new business items. The sewer department is going to be looking at possible... is going to be looking at possible work on the walls of the wet well and cover to remove corrosion. And we were approached about the water users district behind the hills end leaking, and that needs to be looked into. The next meeting will be December 27th, 2:00 at City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Economic Development, Georgia and Marty?
I'm going to let Marty, I think, go also.
Okay, we'll have the update from the December meeting at the January 2nd City Council meeting, and then the next Shedco meeting will be January 19th, third Friday of every month.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skylar?
Our next meeting will be February 12th.
And Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Volunteer Fire Department met 12 December. They're obviously quite busy with Custer. Big, big business. They approved and applied life insurance policies on all active, prospering volunteer fire department people. And that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And the comprehensive plan coordination, Sam?
Administrator Barberi and I met on Wednesday, December 13th at the library. We discussed Section 3 of the Comprehensive Plan, which is economic development. We discussed, we discussed some demographic changes and trends, as well as some suggestions for the plan for the 1978 Downtown Master Plan, as well as the B H C L G Black Hills Regional Economic Plan. We discussed some directions for economic development, including health and wellness centered on Fall River and our springs, and agricultural development. Administrator Barberi has included some suggestions on ag development derived from interview with local historian and writer Peggy Sanders and Russell Wyatt. We discussed historic preservation revitalization, as well as expanding the public art projects our downtown is becoming famous for. We also discussed ways to market to outdoorsmen and hunters to increase traffic in town during the off-season. Our next meeting will be on January 10th.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we have Resolution 2017-21. This is a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the 2018 Bridge Improvement Grant for the Jennings Bridge Replacement Project. And we have completed the engineering work, in the process of completing the engineering plans for that. This is a very important bridge, as it is our primary emergency access route from the fire department to the rest of the community. And our score for the big grant should guarantee that we do get that funded with that grant. So I'd accept a motion to authorize the submission of that application at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-21. The resolution authorizes the submission of application for the 2018 Bridge Improvement Grant for Jennings Bridge Replacement Project.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2017-21. Is there any discussion, questions or comments?
What is our score number? What score did we end up at?
I don't know the exact number, but we, we will rank very high because the bridge is the only emergency access. Prior to this, we were not informed that the university overpass was not high enough to allow all of our emergency vehicles to pass under. So we gained an additional, I believe it was 20 points as a result of that. And so that puts us in a category where we would, should by all means get, get funded.
It's like up to 50 or something?
It's over that. Probably in the 60s or 70s.
Mayor Cotty?
Yes?
I understand that we won't know what our number is until we submit for the grant. They'll take a look at all of the information and then rank every one of the submissions and give them a...
Just based on last year's criteria, right? So we don't, that's why we don't, we don't...
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2017-21 signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business items. We'll have a possible motion and discussion to change the airport manager position to full-time. I'd accept a motion to do that at this time.
I'll make a motion to, to change our airport manager position to full-time.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we change the airport manager position to full-time. Is there any discussion?
I have some questions. Ed, looks like you're out there?
Yep.
Should he come to the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the reason for going to full-time, there's quite a list of items here, but it's, it's because the work has increased in those three months out of the year that you are part-time now. Is that correct?
Right.
So looking at a lot of the reasons for why we need a full-time manager, it's talking about mowing, weed control, those kinds of things. That doesn't impact your workload in the winter, does it?
No, like I got in there, basically, the only difference is in summertime, it's mowing grass in wintertime. It's following snow when needed. All the rest of it is same thing year-round. Has to be done, payments and everything.
Okay. You've also talked before about you move aircraft. Am I misstating that?
No, I move aircraft.
And is that something our insurance company is comfortable with you doing? Any of city employee damages aircraft, is the city going to be responsible for that?
I can answer that if you want. They recommend that we establish a whole conference agreement, and we're working on that. So that they sign off on...
Ed, thinking any of those movements?
Most airports move aircraft instead of have made the major was damaging other vehicles or things.
And then in the justification also talks about 3,990 per year increase in aircraft. Is that pretty much averaging out over the 12 months? Or are we still seeing an increase in the last three months of the year in number of aircraft?
When they pick off, depends on the weather. Good weather, you're going to have more aircraft coming in.
They're just averaging that all around enough to 4,000. That's 332 aircraft a month. Is that going to be reflected in what you see in the three months in the fall?
I guess.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Ed, bring your hand off. I did ask for the numbers for December, January and February, and, and I was told that they just weren't available.
I did.
I never got them. About a month ago, I answered that at an admin meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I presented.
The, the numbers in the past, you know, like last year for those three months, do you know what they are?
Not offhand, but I figured it all out, presented it.
We never got that. We never see that. And Kim said she couldn't get it for me. Right?
I don't recall seeing them for those three months.
Yeah, no, I asked for...
I know that we had, we had some averages that we were looking at.
You asked me in three months. At that meeting, you asked what you were...
Yeah, I was just requesting, you know, I've got kind of a numbers person and I wanted somebody to go back. I know you keep good records. Just in the past couple of years, what you've seen during those three months, how busy you are with...
I might have just misunderstood what those numbers were and assumed that they, they were just averages, not actual numbers. That might have been my fault.
No, it was for those three months. Anyway, you do a good job. We're, you know, this, this, and no, our questions about this in no way reflects on you. It's the position and whether, you know, we can answer to the public that we believe that we need someone there eight hours a day, December, January and February, or whether part-time is still okay.
You know, some days you're going to be busy, some days not. For example, Kevin's sponge, you know, wintertime is when it's busy, summertime.
Well, and one of the things too, it runs, the airport runs very similar to our shop and the golf course, where the wintertime is when you get all your maintenance done. So, so we're anticipating that that's what he's filling up most of his time with. And we've got the ice and, and snow removal. We've got the double tack, increasing taxiway for extra ice and snow removal. We've got extra projects that he's been working on. The FAA has their sites on our airport and are, have been more and more active there, doing more and more studies, requiring more from them. Once we start getting into the mining, though, that'll be going on year-round. We'll need people in for that. We're looking at annexing the airports for the cities, so he'll be a part of that whole process. There's so many other new things that are coming aboard as this airport grows. And I, I hope that you all took some time and looked through the economic development section where we're really looking at our airport becoming more and more of an economic generator for our community, much more than you would initially think when we see Misty's reports of how much oil or water fluid we sell. It's more than that. So I think whenever we're trying to validate what he does on an hour-per-hour basis for a half-day through three months of time, we have to really look at ourselves and say, has, it's kind of like, kind of like DOT does for putting in extra signage or lighting or something out of road. Have we been getting enough traffic through and enough business going on that this facility deserves a full-time position? And I, I stand with the airport advisory board, and I really believe it does.
That's what I figured, if I were before, you know, given their input, you know, since they have the knowledge, or some of the council people have no knowledge at all, I'd put those out in different departments.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for Kim or for Ed, and when you referenced greater duties regarding FAA and DOT's interest, and it talks about grant writing. Is that Ed doing grant writing?
He will be helping, yes.
Okay.
And actually, even when we hire, let's say we even hire an engineer that does it, it'll be our airport engineer that goes to Ed on a regular basis. I need this information. Can you figure out that, what happens in this circumstance? And he's on call for all of those things. He's on meetings, he's on conference calls. Just, just alone for the last month, I've probably had more phone calls, meetings with Ed than any other department had. I've spent more time in meetings with him on things that are going on at the airport than any other department had.
Is that because of Pete Leane?
It's because of Pete Leane, it's because of the double taxiway finishing out and new projects starting. It's due to finishing up one engineer and hiring another engineer for the FAA for the upcoming year. It's regarding, what other things am I missing?
For improvement projects.
Yeah, master plan, just finishing up and putting those out. So it's been, it's been a very busy time, and that's December. He's still been busy. So that, that has not changed yet. He still is on call. And you have to understand too, that it's, it's lucky the way our, our time cards run because they start Saturday, Sunday. So if he gets called in Saturday for people coming in on flights, or if there's a life flight and he's got to make sure that everything's spitting, polished, clean, and we got some snow on the weekend, he's there. So he's going to be flexing those hours out during the week as best he can to make sure that he doesn't go over his 40 hours. But stuff happens on weekends. People travel on weekends, and more and more people are using their private planes. So this is something that we're, we're talking about this. Don't picture him sitting kind of desk from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon with an hour lunch. That's not what he does. He's on call, erratic hours, making sure that he's there for anybody who needs to come in, get out, move a plane, get it back in, still do his maintenance, do, take care of whatever weather comes up, no matter if it's coming in at midnight, because if there's a life flight, he's there, you know? So understand that it's, it, when you talk about 40 hours and he only works a half-day each week, each day, each week, that's not the case. And the 40 hours, when you're doing that kind of work, gets eaten up very quickly.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the council?
Not a question, but I do have a comment. Ed, I do appreciate what you do. You turled me out there twice. As I said last time, when your folks were here, it's obvious, you know, the job we do out there. So it's appreciable. And looking at everything in the justification, the one thing that still sticks with me is every time we talk about this, Pete Leane has always talked about, when the mining starts, when the mining starts. Well, I think if you look back since that contract was signed and talked about, when the mining starts, when the mining starts, we still don't have a clue when it's going to start. And for me, I would look at when the, when the mining starts, using some of that money to offset the increase in weight. That was still troublesome for me. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Again, you do have all the information in your packages.
Thank you, Ed.
And Ed and the members of the airport advisory committee here, any comments from any of the advisory board? Hearing none. I just want to remind you, I believe that we have budgeted for this in the 2018 budget. So it's not a budget issue from that standpoint. And again, the GOED study that was done by the Governor's Office of Economic Development does show that our airport does have almost a million dollars with the economic impact to our Fall River Springs community. Hearing no more comments, I'd ask, Misty, that you called the role place for this vote?
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
No.
Mark Feyer?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
No.
Skylar Wetzel?
No.
You have four yeses and three nos.
The motion does, does carry. We have a lot of meat, a discussion and a motion to approve a plaque showing a simple lot line revision. You have that information in your package. And the background on that is a property is being sold, a home is being sold. And it extends, the way the tract is plotted, it extends into another property. And this is just an adjustment to ensure that the home and the garage property are separated. I'd accept a motion to approve that plaque.
I'll make a motion to approve the plaque for the Galvin Track West and Galvin Track East of Catholic in addition to the City of Hot Springs.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this plaque. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to approve a proposal by the Rotary Club to build a van shelter in Centennial Park. Marty has provided a very excellent summary for that in your packages. I'd accept a motion to approve that proposal at this time.
I'd like to make the motion, excuse me. I, I just wanted to add to that motion that the Rotary Club will build the van shelter stage at Centennial Park and will be responsible for funding for this. They do state that they will raise money to cover the additional balance required.
Is there a second to this motion?
I'd second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we... Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the proposal by the Rotary Club to build a van shelter in stage at Centennial Park, providing that the club will raise all funds to cover the cost of that shelter.
Can I clarify that we do have some donated funds available for a pavilion or a van? Is that something you'd like excluded from this project?
I'm just going by what they said in there and this from Marty, that they would, that they have different funds available, but they would fund any that they're short. That's all I ask.
And we had discussed the, when I discussed it with Pat and the Rotary Club and with Misty, I believe that when we're looking at the 4,000 in additional funds, we were actually including that.
I believe that was in there.
In that.
Okay.
Is that correct, Pat, too? Yes.
It's what? It's like 980.
Yeah, and that was.
Or something that we have.
Maybe we need to include all this in our motion.
Okay. Yeah, that might be necessary to include that. Okay. So we do then have a motion then that they will provide the additional funds and that includes the $4,000 that's mentioned in the, in the package. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that. Or I don't, I don't, I'm not sure we're doing that.
Marty's seconded it.
I second that.
So we do have a motion and a second.
Wouldn't I just amend my motion to add that to it? Would that be more correct?
And also that Brian Spencer was going to donate the time for construction on the stage. So I mean, he probably needs to have all that included.
Okay. Caroline, let's go ahead and ask you to amend the motion and read the motion as you would like to have it presented to the council, please.
Marty? Wait just a second. Yes.
Misty, I believe what you were talking about was there, this $980 was set aside and the city had committed to contributing that amount to the construction of that shelter.
There are actually donated funds, funds donated.
The city has that fund, and we agreed that we would make that funds available. So if you could add that the city will contribute $580 into this allowance.
Oh, okay. Is it 980, is that right?
I just said, I hope that's the right amount. It's somewhere around there. I'm sorry, I don't have access to that.
Well, just the donated amount.
The donated.
The donated amount. Okay. Motion to approve that the Rotary Club will build the van shell stage at Centennial Park and that they will be responsible for the cost and that there will be a donation from the city that will also fund this. Is that all right?
Okay, and do we have a second to that amended motion?
I would second that.
Okay. We do have a motion then that has been made and seconded. Open for further discussion. Hearing none.
How soon are you thinking starting this?
Pat, would you like to answer that? Does Brian have a specific date that he wants to begin construction?
I'm Kenton Sager, 1502 Jomont Street, representing the Hot Springs Rotary Club. Talked with Brian why he's ready to put foundation in at any time, as long as it's not freezing. So at the current time, he can do this as long as we get approval. After that, it's basically volunteer labor. And so it stretches out into the springtime, but.
Good, thank you so much.
We're expecting to move forward as soon as possible, yes.
Thanks, Kent.
Thank you, Kent. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And again, I want to thank Ken and the Rotary Club for your generous donation. You've left your mark around town in many different places, and we certainly appreciate the volunteer work service that you do for Hot Springs. Thank you very much.
And we appreciate the way the city works with us, too, believe me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item D, a possible motion and discussion to authorize the finance officer to transfer 2017 subsidies budgeted from the 212 Additional Sales Tax Fund to the golf course and Evans Plunge for the amounts of $65,000 and $45,000 respectively.
You ready for motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion for the finance officer to transfer 2017 subsidies budgeted from the 212 Fund to the 620 Fund for the golf course, $65,000, 621 Fund, Evans Plunge, $45,000.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we authorize that transfer. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
George, I would comment that the subsidies this year that were budgeted for were $81,597.50 due to controlling expenses and increased revenue. They only need 55% of that. And in the golf course, $98,738 was the amount that we planned to have to subsidize, and they only needed 65 or 66% of that.
Thank you so much for saying that.
Okay. With that announcement, are there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion does carry. Moving on to item E, discussion and possible motion to approve a 2018 COLA increase of 30 cents per hour for all full-time employees and the airport manager effective January 1, 2018.
I'll make that motion to approve the 2018 COLA increase of 30 cents per hour for full-time employees and airport manager effective January 1.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that COLA increase. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have item F, a possible motion and discussion to adjust permanent part-time and current seasonal employees' compensation with the new state minimum wage effective January 1, 2018. And a resolution for this would follow at the next meeting. And Misty, can you give us just a little bit more detail on this before we ask the council to make a motion?
What we're looking to do is present to you resolutions at the January 2 meeting to consider not only raising the required or mandated state minimum wage from 8.65 to 8.85, but also looking to supplement our other seasonal and part-time positions by an equal amount. We'll have two resolutions to present to you at the next meeting for consideration. One, with our standard status quo, doing that, which was the same as we did last year. And another would be looking at changing some of the seasonal part-time rates, specifically at Evans Plunge, but also some front desk positions, custodian positions, and a summer rec instructor, what do you think called? Director at the summit, the people that are in charge of the instructors. So you'll have two resolutions presented to you. Although the state minimum wage increase is mandated and we have no option, we've continued the practice of increasing those other seasonal part-time rates in equal amount.
I'll make a motion to adjust the permanent part-time and current seasonal employees' compensation with the new state minimum wage effective January 1, and a resolution in 2018 to follow.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adjust this, or approve this adjustment and with a resolution to follow at the next meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying.
I have a question.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Reading this, it looks like we're approving two things. We're approving the seasonal employees' compensation for state minimum. And then as we talked today, there are two resolutions that will be presented at the next council meeting. But if we vote yesterday, are we voting that we will accept one of those two at the next meeting? If somebody on the council doesn't like either one of them, is this saying we have to accept one of those?
Well, you have no option in accepting the increase to the state minimum wage. So you can adjust, when you choose which resolution, you can change those dollar amounts in the resolution and pass anything you want, as long as you increase the minimum wage. So what you're saying at this time is that you'll do that.
And also, the admin finance committee will have an opportunity to look at this and bring any recommendations that they might have forward to the council at that time also.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have in your packages a procurement policy manual with some updates and corrections. I'd ask for a motion to approve that updated procurement policy manual.
I'll make that motion to approve and adopt the updated procurement policy. Do we need to make that with any changes?
Yes, ma'am. On page 10, we're removing the council members from the fourth paragraph down. It will state that it's in the travel section that these rules are applicable for all travel expenses incurred on behalf of the city by employees and appointed officials, period. Council does not go through the same process for getting travel approved as employees. And we look at these policies as guidance for employees of the city and of the council. Since you're governing body and you're the ones passing this.
I'll reword that. Motion to approve and adopt the updated procurement policy effective January 1, 2018, with the removal of the wording "council member" from page 10.
Okay. I have a question then, too, where. Is there a second to that?
Sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Marty, go ahead with your question.
Mentioning a change, and I don't know if this is one that's necessary. I was looking at the open purchase orders, since those are claimed.
What page?
Page 8. And they are changed to claim vouchers. Should that say open claim vouchers as well?
No, an open purchase order would be like the fuel we get from Nelson Oil and Gas or propane company. So that shouldn't be changed to claim vouchers.
Good, okay, good. Any other comments or questions? Okay, and again, the word "council" is taken out of there because of the different standards. And there is a check and balance to council and elected officials' travel, because you have to approve the current claims and bills. As Misty told me today, I could not go to Florida.
Right.
To check out golf courses.
I think you could, but we like to pay for it.
Yeah. I'll not be. Okay, that said, there, all those in favor of adopting the updated procurement policy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries as amended. We also have with you, in your packages, a personnel policy manual. I'd accept a motion to approve and adopt that updated manual with the changes listed.
I'll make the motion to approve and adopt the updated personnel policy. Do some changes.
Couple of changes on this, too. Thank you, council members, for your review. On page 28, in the section for sick leave for employees, the second, third paragraph, after the first very long sentence, which says, "An employee absent from work due to illness or disability and the employee shall notify their immediate supervisor before scheduled to work or as soon as possible if an emergency situation exists, and indicate the nature of the illness or disability and expected length of absence." We'd like to add, in the event that a supervisor is not available, the employee must contact City Hall to report the absence there. Had been some occurrences of a supervisor not being available. And so I felt it was important that if there's a position that's gonna be unstaffed or unmanned, that if you can't get a hold of your supervisor, you're required to contact City Hall. And then on page 36, section 10.2, it's in Policy 10, our grievance procedure. 10.2 is the.
What page did you say again?
It's page 36. It's the appeal process, and this is just a change to terminology. I actually found two instances where the governing body is referred to, which is essentially the same as city council. So we're looking to make the change to the terminology governing body, so it's consistent throughout the document. We're gonna change that to city council. And I also found that same verbiage on page 12 in section 2.11, under political activity. Again, it mentions a governing body, and just to be consistent, we would call that city council.
Where is it on the table?
Oh, yeah, that's it. Yeah. Employees are encouraged to exercise their right to vote in city elections, but shall not engage in or participate in any other way in said elections except with permission of governing body. So I'll just change that to city council. It's the second-to-last sentence on page 12. Governing is the last word.
There it is, I see it.
Okay, so we go ahead and accept a motion with those two changes, adding the contacting City Hall and then using and substituting the word governing body in those two particular instances. Does everyone have that change? Okay. We accept a motion.
Oh, I thought I already made it. I'll make a motion with the changes that Misty mentioned, page 28, add contact City Hall, and change governing body on page 12. And was it 28, 36?
36.
Will that do?
That will do. We need a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept this personnel policy manual with the changes that have been discussed. Are there any further comments or discussion?
I just want to make the comment, you've come a long way, baby.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment. On page 22, section 4, page 14.
What's that?
4, page 14. Employment with relatives and emetism. Halfway through that paragraph, it says, "Thus, employment optional. Immediate family members within the same department." And that goes on to describe immediate family members. I think it's obvious, at least I have heard this, to say that when they're talking about departments, this makes perfect sense. It's been suggested on numerous occasions that this should also apply with the mayor. And I think that's, could be further from the truth. The mayor is elected by the citizens. And I think we need to respect the will of who they want to be their mayor. And we need to trust in integrity of that person. So to suggest that somebody that would want to be mayor can't run for mayor because they have a family member that's employed by the city, or that city, that family member would need to retire from the city. I think it's just ridiculous to suggest that this particular section should somehow be applied to whoever fills the office of mayor. I just wanted to say that publicly, because it's been mentioned numerous times that that should apply. For me, it can be further from the truth. Thank you.
And would you say those comments apply to anyone that could be on city council and under the same situation?
Yes.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Personnel Policy Manual as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have, before you, item aye, a possible motion to reappoint Mike McNeil to the Hot Springs Housing Commission for a five-year term, running from 2018 to 2022. I did have an opportunity to talk with Mike. He is not being coerced into this. He's a volunteer, has served the Housing Commission well in the past. He's a volunteer, has served the Housing Commission well in the past, and I would ask for someone to make a motion to reappoint him as amended.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Mike McNeil to Hot Springs Housing Commission for a five-year term, 2018 through 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Mike. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have item J, a possible motion and discussion to approve a contract for professional services with Mac Main, Bennett, Main, Grubert, Willard, to review the mining lease at our airport with expenses not to exceed $5,000. Again, I would accept a motion to go ahead and approve that contract for professional services.
I'll make that motion to accept Mac's Main, Bennett, Main, Grubert, and Willard TC to review our mining lease agreement based on the recognition of our city attorney and not to exceed $5,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint that attorney and firm to review our mining lease. Are there any discussion, questions, or comments? Only comment I'd like to make is, just for the public, we do, and I do appreciate our attorneys recommending this, as they've looked at the Pete Lane and Sons mining contract and felt that we needed to have someone with more expertise review it. Again, I've contacted Pete Lane and Sons to let them know that we're not trying to get out of any contract, but we simply want to make sure, as we are tying up our airport for 27 years and three months with this contract, we need to make sure that we are doing things in a most beneficial manner for our city. And I think that we, it's important that we have someone that's an expert in that area take a look at it, and that's why this motion is before you. Are there any other comments or discussion?
I appreciate you talking to them.
All those then in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have on item K, a possible motion and discussion to leave the 2018 golf course rates unchanged from 2017. And you have those rates listed before you in the package. And again, just a little bit of background, the Golf Course Advisory Committee was concerned because the number of annual memberships was down slightly this coming year. They felt that raising rates would exacerbate that situation in the future. So I think that's the background on that. I'd accept a motion to approve that, that rate structure at this time.
And make a motion to approve leaving the 2018 golf course rates unchanged from 2017.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to leave those rates at the same. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I did have some discussion, a little bit with the personnel there, because our summer is extending on into December, and we do have expenses that are incurred because we're open. However, with Misty's statement that she gave us, that we are actually doing better than what we had projected, unhappy that we can do that. But I would think that in the future, maybe we should look at an open and end date, maybe, so we're not extending our personnel over into the winter season.
Okay, and, you know, again, golf is one of those weather-dependent dates, and if you could predict an open and a closing day, that might, you know, that might be a little bit easier, because I know that there were a lot of happy members that got a chance to play golf.
Very happy, really, now.
And even some from out of town that came in and paid the full green fees, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving those golf course rates, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item L, we have a possible motion and discussion to approve a travel request from Misty and Mary Hardy to attend an overview of TIFs from the state's perspective, presented by the South Dakota Department of Revenue, Secretary Andy Brilak in Rapid City. And that will be held at the Business Development Center up there. You do have that travel request in your package. I accept a motion to...
I'll make a motion to accept the travel request from Misty and Mary Hardy, Misty Walton and Mary Hardy, to go to the TIF training for the South Dakota Department of Revenue with Andy Brilak in Rapid City on 12/19/17. And I am impressed that they are both going.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded then that we approve that travel request. Any discussion, questions, or comments?
What is a TIF?
Taxing, it deals with tax income and financing, and it can be a very controversial study. It's a program that's used to incentivize economic development in the community. And so it's important to learn the ins and outs, and I'm glad that...
His business is a break.
He's older than you. Doctor, you're here.
No, that's... Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That travel request is approved. Moving on, Finance Officer, report, Misty.
Thank you, and thank you for approving that travel request. Looking forward to it. It's tomorrow, so I'll be out of the office a little bit. It's a, it's a one-hour overview, and Mary Hardy has worked diligently on our special assessments, and TIFs have similar recording and tracking, so we thought it would be beneficial to bring her along to travel together, so the expense would be the same. I wanted to remind the council of a announcement I sent out from the municipal league regarding an upcoming legislative RIT dinner. It's on February 7th in beautiful Pierre, South Dakota. It is an interesting opportunity to visit and hear from legislators and see the legislature in action. If you're interested in attending, please, even if you're not, please be sure to get back with me so I can get reservations made. We already have one council member who's interested in attending, so there's an opportunity for carpooling, if maybe the travel is something that would keep you from agreeing to do that. I just wanted to let you know. We did wrap up our auction. We had great results for our auction. If anybody's interested in knowing what those are, I have that information. I haven't gotten any cash yet from it, but it's coming. We've had a lot of items picked up. I know we've kept the Streets Department busy. We've had items picked up at the Library, and Mueller Center, and at City Hall, and we were just really pleased with the results of the auction, and it feels good to get some things cleared out. There will be some potential to maybe use some of that unplanned and unbudgeted money for some projects that are important, so more to come on what we net from that. And again, if anyone is interested in many specifics, I have all those details. City Hall staff's busy with end-of-year wrapping up. There's outstanding checks, outstanding invoices, inventories, end-of-year payrolls, stuff like W-2s and 1099s to do. Our payable and receivable and accrued period is 30 to 60 days, so we hope to have everything wrapped up. So I'll have an annual report to you by the first meeting in March, although it does take some time. Just be prepared, it doesn't end December 31st because we are accrual-based accounting. So anything that we purchased but didn't pay for until 2018 needs to be posted back. Expenses like payroll that maybe is accrued but not paid until the following year also needs to be accounted for and posted, as well as revenue. We've received in several pieces of revenue that are actually for the month prior, so we have to go all the way through January and really into the first couple of weeks in February before we can get all those numbers finalized. With this being the last meeting before the beginning of the year, I want to remind you that that first meeting of next year will be looking at those wage resolutions, not just for all our full-time employees, but also our part-time and seasonal staff members. So make sure that if you have some questions, you're fully aware of the implications of those. We're here to help. Also, our resolutions designating our banks and our official newspapers will be on that first council agenda. We'll be setting some approvals for parades and getting all the beginning-of-the-year work done. I'd like to take an opportunity, thank you for another year working with the city, and wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy Year. We'll see you again.
Thanks, Misty. City Administrator, Kim?
Okay, a couple, a number of things have happened. One, the very first thing though, I need to make a clarification of a statement that I made at the first November meeting. I had to spend a fair number of hours talking with folks from the DOT clarifying that I in fact did not tell people that the highway project would be considered a taking for any losses that a business would accrue from being disrupted. So, anybody listening, when a highway project goes through, you are not going to be getting any type of reimbursement of financial losses. What I intended to say was that the state has some money set aside to help businesses support each other through the business, through the business time during the construction. So what that means is, for example, at the Mount Rushmore Road project that's been going on apparently forever, they helped fund a newsletter that the businesses that were affected by the construction got together and they put together for themselves to keep their partners, to keep the other businesses appraised on what was going on. They put signage up at the, any detours and stuff of how to get to a certain business. Those are the types of things I meant whenever they were talking about support for businesses during a construction project. I just wanted to make that clarified so that there was no other misunderstandings of what you're entitled to during a construction project. That being said, on December 12th, I spent probably a really, really eye-opening day with our city's loss control specialist from South Dakota, what would it be? The SLM, SDPAA, I'll be, an acronym's wrong. But really, really fascinating. What we did was we went around to every location, and we sat down and talked with the department head about their safety aspects. Do they have the, I know them as MSDS sheets, SDS sheets? Do you have those things available for even your cleaning products? Where are they held? What do you do for safety training? How often do you do that? How, how often do you do inspections of your facilities? Really, really, you know, long questionnaires for every one of the departments, even like the Library had quite a few questions. And I tell you, I have never been more proud. Our safety program that Lori Scherrard heads up has got, has got these departments running like a well-oiled machine. They knew where everything was, they knew how to answer things, they, they knew that what, what few deficiencies there were, they were aware of them, and were in the process of correcting them. There was only one department that was less than what I would have liked, and we have already a program set in progress. I worked with them all last week, getting a new set of standards together, and we're working closely on that. They're going to be my, my winter project, and we're going to be getting that up to speed. But I tell you, Lori has done an amazing job, and I want to do a call-out for our department head. They are really, really spectacular. And on the one department that has some problems, they're based solely on deferred maintenance that had been chosen from prior administrations to not do work, to choosing not to like repair a roof, choosing not to, you know, those kind of things. So those are things that we're going to be dealing with. When those items come up during the budget season, you'll get the whole report of what we would have gotten through this particular inspection. They did give us a report card, and it will show you, I think that's going to be coming...
In your hallway folder?
We can put it in your hallway folders, but basically, it's showing you, whenever we do really good at maintaining our safety levels, we actually save money. So when, when we get those gold awards that Lori gets at her safety meetings, they mean something on a dollar and cents point, and just really, really proud of the group for that. Lastly, let's see, well, we're heading into the new year. This has been a whirlwind of three months, and I appreciate everybody's support through a long way. I can't thank Sam enough. I feel like I can sleep well at night now, knowing that we're moving so well through our comp plan, and I think by the time we come to the public hearings, they're really going to have been looked over closely, so I'm very, very happy with that. I just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy Year, and look forward to working with you next year.
Thank you. And I have several things to report, the mayor's report. First of all, this will be the last time I mention Boulder Falls. Has had the ribbon cut. I thank those that were there. I think we had an excellent opportunity at the ribbon cut to get some good media coverage. I've heard several comments from people, not only here in Hot Springs, but out of town, that witnessed the news reports, a very excellent report on KNBN that was, was given, and that's a benefit because it does show that we do have lots available with paved streets. I also want to give our fire department a huge thank you, the recent fire. I was, had an opportunity to meet with Frank Mayr today, the emergency manager coordinator for Fall River County, and he relayed to me that Hot Springs Fire Department played a key role in stopping that fire from crossing Highway 79. They were out there on the scene, and had that gone past Highway 79, we don't know where it would have stopped. So real kudos to our fire department, the excellent job that they did. Some other news that I want to report to you. I did receive a message that was sent to our Finance Officer that says that the Miss South Dakota Pageant is going out for requests for proposal to other, all cities in South Dakota that would be interested in hosting it from the 2019 to 2021 event. I did have opportunity to call one of the board members. They're concerned that the interest in the pageant is waning, both in, from the standpoint of contestants and from the standpoint of attendance. And they feel that perhaps giving some of the larger communities in South Dakota an opportunity, they may gain some additional sponsorships and so forth. They have asked that each city provides a request for proposal to see if they want to be a part of it. Again, I don't believe that that's our responsibility as a city to do, because we're dealing mostly, other than our city facility here, we're dealing with businesses within the community provide support, such as rooms, food, et cetera. So I'll be meeting with the Chamber Board Directors on Wednesday and see if they are willing and feel it's an important enough aspect for them to put a proposal in to host, continue to host the Miss South Dakota Pageant. I think it has been a benefit to Hot Springs through the years. It's something that we've hosted, what has been, I think, 71 years. It's the only pageant in America that has been hosted in one city since its inception, and it would be a shame to lose it, and I hope that we can put together a, a package that we would be able to continue hosting it. But I know that several other cities are interested and have been for years in doing that, and the board finally capitulated, and their goal is to gain additional scholarship money for those contestants, and that comes through more sponsorships, bigger attendance, and so forth. And I just wanted to make the council aware of that. If anyone has any suggestions or concerns or thinks that the city ought to be the one that puts that package together, please let me know. And finally, as the year is ending and we're starting a new year, I have asked Kim to get with the department heads to come up with the top five priorities in each department for the year. And I think this is just a good exercise so that we are thinking ahead and planning ahead what's important and focusing on what's important. And I've done my own list of things that I, as mayor, would like to emphasize through the year. And the first on that list is that workforce housing, and particularly those at the water fill lots. As Misty mentioned, we do have some additional funds that have come in as a result of selling, auctioning off the lots in our town, excess lots. And I think we can use that to tear down the old garage there and make those lots available for developers, get, send out a Request for Proposal hopefully sometime in January of next year, and get something started early in the year and get some workforce, at least prime the pump to get some workforce housing started. The other thing that I would like to see is us develop a plan to annex some additional land to ensure that the city has room to grow and that that is not blocked off by unregulated development. And so I know that I've talked with our city administrator and what we've put in together a plan on what, what and why we need to annex additional land for Hot Springs. As we discussed tonight, third on my list is discussion and decision to install the solar power option. And that's something that we really need to take a close look at the financial options that have been presented to us. That's a council's decision to approve or disapprove. And included in that certainly very, very important is the backup generator for the Hawk Brook Pumping Station. We, if we did have an extended power outage, I don't think any of us could look the community in the eye and say, gee, I'm sorry, you can't have water. So I think that's something that we can maybe look at getting a grant for, but if not, it's something that we need to certainly look at solving that, that issue. And then if we are going to improve our downtown area, the Candeliver sidewalk and Fall River cleanup is also an important thing on our radar. And not that we need to fund that immediately, but we do need to do some engineering on that. And so I think we need to start developing the plans, start coordinating with the Corps of Engineers to get the approvals that we need to do what we want to do on those things. And that'll be something that we can follow up through the year. It's very important that we lay that groundwork so that we're not caught and not ready when the DOT goes to design the new road through our, our community. And then fifthly, I think that we have an excellent opportunity at our city maintenance facility with our million-dollar brush pile, either to chip it or, or develop it into biochar. And we will need to get very soon a memorandum of understanding or a contract to allow the individuals to begin using that facility and producing our biochar. And we're hopeful that that will develop into an industry within our community that will bring people to work here. And that coupled with the new houses that we're going to build, I think, would be off to a good start in 2018. So those are kind of what I'm looking at as priorities. I would encourage you as council people to also establish things that you want to focus on that thinks the community needs in your various areas of expertise and the committees that you have, because it's important that we do keep looking forward. I think we've had a great year. As with any kind of organization, there's going to be bumps and bruises occasionally, but we've picked up and I think picked up the ball and run well. I thank you all for all your support, and I look forward to a good year of 2018. And with that.
Can I just make one comment?
You sure may.
With this money that we're going to have from this thing, I'm in the historical commission in the building, I think it was our Save Our Sandstone building, next to the Flatiron.
717.
Pardon?
717.
Kim's well aware of this, but that, that may cost the city some money. And, you know, we're going to have to come up with it, and it could be a lot. So before we, you know, decide, you know, to do something great to tear down the armory building, but we've got to keep in our mind that before the streets come through, before they put that through, something has to be done with that building.
Okay, thank you for that, bringing that up.
Just to put that thought in the back of our heads.
Absolutely. And, and I think, I mentioned the, the water fill station garage is what we want to tear down. The armory is a pretty big chunk.
I thought that's what you.
No, no. I want to make sure that that, that was clear. But, you know, that's something that in the future, we have to make a decision on too. But I appreciate those kind of inputs, Carolyn, and that's, that's exactly what we need to look at. So with that, that said, again, thank you, and we do have just a brief executive session, so I'd ask for a motion.
Motion to go into executive session for legal?
And there should be no decision after. Yeah, excuse me. There's been a motion and second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are going into executive session at 8:57.
Merry Christmas, see you guys next year.
Okay, be no further items on the agenda, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, thank.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, duty to adjourn. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.